Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Oviedo City Council meeting. It is Monday, February 4th, 6:30 PM. We have a whole bunch of Boy Scouts and Weeblo's out in the hallway, so why don't I invite them in? They're going to help lead us in the pledge. Ooh, look how serious they are. We'll let them get positioned, and then they can ask us all to rise. You guys got it, right?
The microphone's not on. Give us a minute.
Good evening and welcome.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Great job. Great job.
Thank you.
All right. And we're going to have everyone back in in just a little bit, because I think you have something you want to share with everyone this evening. So we'll see you guys in just a few moments. Well, tonight's our first meeting without Chief White, because he just went and retired on January 31st. So we're going to ask Chief Coleman to do our invocation this evening, and then what I think I'll do, Chief, is I'm going to rotate it back and forth as we go forward between police and fire, so. That way, you're prepared for next week. And our new chief is here, Jeff Buchanan. Jeff, why don't you stand up and be introduced? New fire chief been with us. Jeff, you have 32, 33 years with us?
Thirty.
I'm sorry?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three years with us, folks. So we've got a great team here. But Chief, I'll turn it over to you.
This is also my first time doing the invocation for council, so...
Yeah, but I know, but I gave you five minutes of warning.
And I have big...I can't feel Chief White's shoes, but I'll do my best. If you'd like to bow your heads and pray with me. Dear heavenly fathers, we come to you tonight. We ask that you pour your blessing upon the leaders of this community, of this council, that you grant them wisdom, that you grant them courage and discernment, and that their actions they do reflect your will. We ask that you protect all those that are in attendance, that give them safe travels home, and protect their families, and just watch over them. We ask these in your name. Amen.
Great job, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Good job.
Sounds like a permanent position. All righty, so I will now call our meeting officially to order. It is 6:35 PM or so. We have all members of council present this evening. So our first item, we have three ceremonial items tonight, and the first item on the agenda tonight is a presentation from the Oviedo Boys and Girls Club. I saw representatives in the audience. Why don't you come on up?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gary Kane. I am the president and CEO of Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Florida. Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Florida serves 15,000 children from 35 boys and girls clubs in the...in the seven county area. And we're excited just to share with you this evening our efforts toward initiating and getting underway a new Boys and Girls Club in Oviedo. We have had a wonderful steering committee, a lot of great support from the donor community, donor support, and support from community leaders. And so what is a Boys and Girls Club? A Boys and Girls Club starts with a place where young people can come every day, they can get academic support, they can get fed, they have great role models. It removes them from some of the other maybe things that might be of a challenge, and we focus on three elements in our formula for impact, or our formula for success. Academic success, citizenship and character, leadership development, and healthy lifestyles. So everything that we do filters through that. We serve children 6 to 18. Boys and Girls Club serves children who primarily in our organization who would be from lesser advantaged circumstances. So as you might imagine, if you're in a situation where your family's struggling economically, or you're a single-parent family, or you're...you don't have all the support systems, it's important to have great role models in your life. It's also important to be removed from temptation and elevated in terms of the expectations of you. So that's what we do every day. Boys and Girls Club members pay a very nominal membership fee, $15 a year. They get a Boys and Girls Club t-shirt, and they can come every year. So we're excited to be partnering to get one started here. We're, you know, in the process of raising some capital dollars to do some facility retrofit as well as operation dollars. And the biggest challenge is not only just raising the operation dollars at one time, it's every year, because the kids aren't bringing the money. So we're excited. I will just say on a personal note, I'm a club alum from Panama City, Florida. Number six or seven in my family. One of my brothers went to prison and died a few years ago as a transient. My sister was 14 when she became pregnant, and that challenged her and her wife greatly. She did get her act together. And my little brother also died in desperate poverty a couple of years ago. And the difference for me, in all the chaos of an alcoholic father, mom had been orphaned young in life, and very few resources, was the Boys and Girls Club. And there was a man there who inspired me greatly, who believed in me, who saw more in me than I could have ever expected, and sort of the American dream. So it starts here. You go to school, you go to college, didn't know it was college material. And then the big payoff, you know, our daughter is an attorney, our son is a banker, and trust me, for my family, bankers and lawyers don't come from where we come from. But we are both very fortunate, five beautiful grandkids, and we want to make that possible for more children who have some challenges in life. I'm going to turn it over to the more loquacious and charming person, Alicia Hod.
Loquacious. Gary mentioned that he was an alum, and I wanted to point out, we have another alum in the house, Brian Cobb. It's good to have you as an alum of Boys and Girls Club. But I...working in Oviedo, I know it's rich in history, so I just want to give you a really quick history of how this came to be. A few years ago, we were approached by Seminole County Sheriff's Office, then Sheriff and Under Sheriff Steve Harriet and Don Esslinger, and they're huge supporters of Boys and Girls Clubs, because they know that the critical work we do positively impacts what they do. Unbeknownst to me, there was an individual here who has been advocating and pushing and lobbying for Boys and Girls Clubs years before I was approached. And I had the pleasure of meeting him at Leadership Seminole, I think it's Law and Justice Day. And he was the police chief then, but now he's Councilman Jeff Chudnow. And once that relationship...once we had that relationship, it was go-go-go from there, and it's been a tremendous, tremendous journey since. We have so many people involved with this project, so many families and businesses right now. Oviedo Police Department, of course, Jeff brought them on, and they've been tremendous supporters of what we're doing. We were even the beneficiaries of the very first successful K-9 competition, which was amazing. Antioch Missionary Baptist Church, who actually donated the use of their building that they purchased, which we'll be using for our Boys and Girls Clubs. And since they were such advocates, they also donated $35,000 to fund the renovation of the building. And just some other, the Lucas family, the Duda family. I have to mention Rick Lee of Citizen Bank, just to name a few. And I just have to mention Richard Haynes of RLH, who donates his time as a general contractor. He also brought on the engineer, the interior designer, and the architect, free of charge for us. So it's been a wonderful journey, and we are excited to be a part of...we are excited to have Oviedo as a part of the Boys and Girls Club family. Thank you.
Well, Matt, great question. I'll just run away yet. I thought I heard, and I'm going to turn it over to Chief Chudnow, Councilman Chudnow in a second, but did I hear that you're about 30 to 40 percent at your fundraising goal already?
We are fundraiser...we are raising $700,000. I'll tell you why. $250,000 for renovation and FFE. Don't ask me what FFE is. I know at all times, I know what FFE is. And then we have in that number, three years of operating, because it's really important that we have enough money to sustain the clubs, because nobody wants to open a club and then have to tell kids, "We can't afford to run it." So the $700,000, yes, and we have over $300,000 in cash and pledges right now.
That is awesome. Is there a website or someplace that folks can go if they wanted to donate to the cause or that can be shared with the city, and perhaps we can get it out on the city website? Get links out there for you?
You can use the actual website for Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Florida, Donate. The only thing I will tell you is make sure in the comment field, it's BGCCF.org, but if you put Boys and Girls Clubs of Central Florida, it'll come up. Click the red Donate button, but make sure you put "Oviedo" in the comment section, so...because we have a seven-county footprint, and we have a lot of clubs, so we want to make sure it goes straight to Oviedo. And I just want to mention one other thing. If you go to a Boys and Girls Club event, you'll see some people with the Giving Society red ribbon. And these are folks who have generously pledged to be a part of our donors, generously pledged to be donors for five years, which means they obviously believe in the mission, they believe in the sustainability of the clubs, and they invest heavily in the future of our children. We have a couple here, Jeff Chudnow and Patrick, Patrick, one of our, of course, Gary, one of our Giving Society members. And once we open our club, the folks who become Giving Society members, you'll see them prominently displayed on a plaque on the wall, and that's how we're hoping to raise our money.
Any information that you can share with the city? Information on the website, the link, the fundraising goals, the different levels? Anything that you can share with us that we can push out to the community?
Absolutely.
Because I think you'd be surprised, you might get more support throughout the community than you're aware you'll get if we could just bring awareness to it.
Absolutely. And coming soon, once we solidify the agreement, we'll have a sign up at the site with a number you can call, and we're hoping that will generate a whole lot more. And we're planning to be in the...have an article in the May-June Oviedo Winter Springs Life magazine as well.
All right, so make sure your fundraising website's in there.
I will definitely make sure of that.
Chief, why don't I turn this over to you?
Well, as Ann Olisia has put together a little PowerPoint, and if you run through the PowerPoint, what's important here is that about...besides their mission, if you look at, about 74 percent of Florida's eighth graders are not proficient in math. About 61 percent are not proficient in reading. Without those skills, chances of doing well are severely decreased. As Gary had said, academics, leadership mentoring, and those things are the key. From my past law enforcement experience, too, if we put this emphasis up front, we're not dealing with them later. It's good for them, it's good for our community to have a place where kids can go to be after school, to have those help with those things. It comes out to be immeasurable.
I do want to add, we do have two clubs here right now in Sanford and East Altamont that are very successful, which is why we know we're doing well here in Seminole County with 100 percent graduation rate and 100 percent plan for the future rate, which is equally as important, so.
That is amazing. Counsel, any other comments, questions?
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Awesome job. Give them a round of applause, folks. All righty, our next item on ceremonial, why don't I turn this over to Mr. Patrick Kelly? Patrick, why don't you come on up and introduce the group?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. About a year or so ago, you were approached by a young man, or two young men, excuse me, who said they wanted to bring a youth advisory council to the city of Oviedo. And since that time, we have kind of turned...come on, guys.
Come on up, guys, we don't bite.
We have kind of done our best to coach them as they establish themselves and figure out exactly what their role will be. We've taken a kind of semi-passive approach and let them tell us what they want to see as youth of this community. And I think, as I have been, I know you will be extremely impressed with the quality of the youth in this community. So I'd like to turn it over to Michael and Christian, and let them kick it off and introduce themselves to you.
Oh, thank you, Patrick. And I can say, in meeting with this group a few times, I mean, they are one impressive group of young adults here in our community, and our future is certainly bright, guys. But let me turn it over to you.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, gentlemen of the council. Thank you for walking us tonight into the council chambers as we formally present the Oviedo Youth Advisory Council, our mission and our goals for this year and for years to come. My name is Michael McNamara. I serve as the president of the Oviedo Youth Advisory Council.
My name is Christian Conrad, and I serve as the vice president of the Youth Advisory Council, and we've worked to bring this council about and also our initiatives.
So the youth council was originally conceived as a service and leadership project after I attended a summer leadership program with the American Legion called Boy State, where youth leaders from around the state assembled in the Florida Capitol. I saw the involvement of youth leaders from miles around and the impact they were making in their communities, and I knew how important it was that Oviedo cultivated this same kind of program and gave the same kind of tools to youth in our community here. Now, I approached Christian about what was just an idea at the time, and together, we have worked closely with the city government, and especially Mr. Patrick Kelly, as we work with both Oviedo Public High Schools to assemble our council, as you can see before us.
And now with that, I would like to introduce the rest of our council, and all of these members have gone through the application process and are either students of Oviedo or Hagerty High School.
Hi, my name is Jerry Williams. I'm 10th grade, and I attend Oviedo High School.
Hi, I'm Alex Towan. I'm a sophomore at Hagerty High School.
I'm Hannah Sanchez, and I'm a sophomore at Hagerty High School, and I'm director of media.
Hi, my name's Ty Markman, and I'm also a sophomore at Hagerty High School.
Hello, my name is Taylor Johnson, and I'm a junior at Hagerty High School, and I'm director of information.
Hi, I'm Bethany Jablon. I'm a sophomore, and I attend Oviedo High School.
Hello, I'm Laura Perez. I'm a senior, and I'm from Hagerty High School.
Now, I'd like to point out with our member studio, we do not have four with us tonight, unfortunately, but they...we have 12 members, six members from each of the public high schools, and Laura is an affiliate that we have who serves with the...helps with the youth council, which is another level of the membership which we have with the council. So everyone has gone through an application process here to be here tonight, or in addition, they have volunteered with us, just as we try to get as many people as possible involved with the program. So everyone here, we try to reach out to as many people as possible, as many students as we can. I'll turn it back over to Krishna.
Could we do the next slide, please? Thank you. So our three main goals of the Youth Advisory Council is representation, leadership, and service. So not only do we want to represent the youth in our community, we also want to help lead them, and lead them to participate in their community and to serve their community and make it a better place, just for everybody.
Some initiatives that we've been working on for this year, for 2018 and 2019. Now, the main focus that we've had this year as a youth council has been to try to get ourselves started and oriented so that going forward, we can easily more tackle bigger projects and be a bit more ambitious than we are now. But generally, the goal has been to get ourselves started for this year. Nonetheless, we have set goals for ourselves, which we are working towards as of now. Of these include the Oviedo Purple Heart Project. We are partnered with the American Legion in the city of Oviedo. I'd like to recognize the American Legion representative with us tonight. Thank you so much, sir, for being here and supporting us. The American Legion is going to be working with us on an outreach project to Purple Heart veterans in the city after the council recently voted to become a Purple Heart city for Oviedo, which is an amazing step. So now, the youth council would like to help the city council in achieving that next step towards, what do we do next? How can we make the city a better place after passing this resolution? So we are excited to announce that we will be working with Purple Heart veterans in the city, about reaching out to them, providing communication, one-on-one relationships between the students and with American Legion personnel. Further, also trying to connect veterans to different services that we have in the city that they may not be aware of, whether the city offers or whether nonprofit organizations offer around. And further, that we want to share what their perspective and voices are on certain issues to you all in the city council, because you all do such great work with everything here, especially with the Purple Heart Initiative. We want to be a part of that as well, and make sure all perspectives are heard. Further, we are working on a hometown performing arts festival, tentatively called the "Oviedo's Got Talent." We are going to look towards raising money with a talent show that will go back towards Seminole County public schools, specifically Hagerty and Oviedo High Schools. And if possible, we're going to make sure that the money is going to go towards security and safety for our schools in an era that I think all students especially need to have that measure added. We work with the Oviedo Historical Society on a monthly basis to send volunteers and to try to gain more understanding of our history ourselves and to share that understanding with others. And then tonight, we will be doing a Parkland tribute following this presentation, in which we want to take a look going forward as to what the next step is for us as a youth council.
Okay, so some of the progress that we've made so far as a youth council is that we...in our schools, we have gotten this program to write letters to service members stationed overseas, and we've got over 100 students to write letters to help these service members overseas.
We've also partnered, just as Michael said, with the American Legion for their Purple Heart project. And a quick side note, we partnered with the Army ROTC, or JROTC, over at Hagerty High School to help us with that. We also provide volunteers with the historical society, such as Michael said, giving tours and also with the monthly farmer's market.
And then along with this, our Oviedo Youth Council, we're also collaborating with the Sanford Youth Council on a Parkland commemoration, and you'll see part of that shortly later in the presentation. Next slide, please. Moving forward, we hope to continue many of the initiatives that Michael already mentioned. Mainly, we would like to voice the concerns of local veterans as we work with the Oviedo Purple Heart Project. We also would like to make this hometown festival that we mentioned a thing. And most importantly, we want to present the perspective of Oviedo's youth to the council in the future.
In pushing youth leadership, service, and representation by sharing our perspective with you all, city council, we look forward to the partnership we hope to forge over the next and upcoming years, because we want to be that group for you all to turn to when it comes time to discuss youth perspective, issues in our community that will inevitably affect the students that we have. And beyond that, we serve not...our goal is not only to represent the youth, but the veterans and historians, the adults and students alike, and all citizens of Oviedo as well, to make sure that all perspectives are heard. Once again, we do look forward to working with the city council, as you have all welcomed us so warmly into the Oviedo community, and we look forward to any progress that we shall make with you all this year. Thank you. So with that, before we move into the next presentation, are there any questions or comments that we could address with you?
Counsel, any questions? We'd like to start. Keith?
It's an impressive group, and thank you for doing this. I think you guys are the future leaders of our country, and frankly, I'm not afraid to have you be our leaders. Good job.
You know, Councilman Britton sort of took out what I said. You know, I've sat here for a long time, and I always say, you know, we need some good people in the dugout to take over, and we're not here to run the city, the county, the state, the federal government. You guys could probably do better than the federal government's doing right now, so...
Wait a minute.
But you are...well, I didn't say the workers. I said the leaders, politicians. He shoots rockets off, but he does them really well, so he's good. But you guys are very impressive. Thanks for all you're doing, and we look forward to working with you guys. Whatever you need, we'll be here. Great job.
Councilman Chudnow?
I'd only echo what everybody else said. It's great to see the youth of the community stepping forward and taking a leadership role, especially with our veterans.
Deputy Mayor?
I just got to say, wow. This is an awesome, awesome endeavor for you guys, and I'm just so impressed with the way you've organized this and created this youth council. And I look forward to working with all of you on making Oviedo a much better community than it already is.
Guys, it's been a great journey to date. I mean, it's only going to keep going further. It started with a meeting of Michael and Christian and I in the conference room a year or so ago with an idea, and you asked if you could run with it. You have. I mean, it's very impressive. So we can't wait to see what the future's going to bring, what next year's going to bring, because we have all of our, I've heard sophomores and juniors, so we'll be taking over, and it's going to be exciting. Now, I know we have a presentation, I'm assuming, but I just want to mention something that I heard. Christian, I think you've been accepted somewhere. Would you like to share that with everybody, so they know the type of talent that we're dealing with here? Want me to tell them?
He's got it on his...
Sure.
I got accepted into the United States Military Academy at West Point.
Great job, my friend. Microphone, just.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I just want, as a representative of the American Legion here in the Oviedo area, I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, you need to be careful. This young man's going to be sitting in your seat someday.
No, no, no.
Believe me.
No, no. That young man's going to be the President of the United States.
I'll agree with you 100 percent there. It's been a real honor and a pleasure for all the members of the American Legion to work with these gentlemen and ladies. This young man has a fire built in him like is unbelievable, and we've been really enjoyed working and talking to him, and hopefully carrying on our relationship, not only with him, within the city of Oviedo also. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Anybody have anything else for them? Michael, you have any last words, or you're good?
Before the...nope, nothing else left there. Thank you for everything.
Michael, you're a senior at Oviedo?
Hagerty.
At Hagerty? Where are you headed after your senior year?
I'm sorry.
Where are you headed after your senior year?
Currently, right now, I've been accepted to Rollins College. I will be interviewing for the Alphonse Scholarship there coming up soon, shortly, so hopefully that will...
Good for you.
...get way to fruits of...
I think he applied to Harvard, Yale, Princeton. He's just waiting on all them, making them wait for him.
You guys are all on your way somewhere special. I've seen a lot of presentations up here, and we know what you've been doing. I remember when he started, but I mean, you guys come a long way. West Point, wow, that's awesome. You know?
Great job to you all, and thank you for coming down tonight. Good luck to you. You said something about Parkland, is that...
Yes, sir.
Did you have something planned for us in here?
Yes, sir. We have the...we'd like to share some words with you all tonight on the youth council, and let this be our first real initiative that we present before you all tonight. So with that, I'd like to move into our Parkland tribute. This month marks the one-year anniversary of a tragedy that has scarred Florida and altered the landscape of our lives as students, as parents, and as citizens.
So I'm going to read off the victims of the... Parkland was the site of a devastating mass shooting on February 14, 2018, when a gunman entered magistrate, summoned Douglas High School, and methodically went about taking the lives of 17 innocent students and faculty.
We would now like to read the names of the victims. Alyssa Alhadev, which was a freshman, 14 years old.
Scott Bagel, geography teacher, 35.
Martin Angriano, who was also a freshman and 14 years old.
Nicholas Dorrett, he was a senior, and he was 17.
Aaron Feis, he was the football coach, and he was 37. Jamie Guttenberg, she was a freshman, and she was 14.
Chris Hickson, the athletic director, is 49.
Luke Hoeyer, freshman, 15.
Carol Loughlin, freshman, 14.
Gina Montanto, freshman, 14.
Joaquin Oliver, senior, 17.
Elena Petty, freshman, 14.
Meadow Pollock, senior, 18.
Helena Ramsey, senior, 17.
Alex Snyder, freshman, 14.
And Carmen Centrop, who's a junior, and she was 16.
Peter Wang, a freshman, 15-years-old. With that said, we would now like to take a 17-second moment of silence in honor of those who unfortunately were all victims to this terrible tragedy. It was Abraham Lincoln following the Battle of Gettysburg that famously said, "These dead shall not have died in vain." Today, we would like to make that same promise, and ask for the same dedication to progress from our city council. Together, youth and adults alike can sow the seeds of cooperation needed to make our community a better, safer place, to ensure a tragedy like this cannot and will not occur in our community or any other community after this.
And this is just another reminder that we should take every opportunity that we have to help and try to protect everyone in our communities, and this point of view must be unwavering, and this, this action must be unwavering. We cannot stop this. We need, we need to keep, keep going and keep pushing, and thank you.
Thank you, guys. Great job. Let me share something with you. Just this past week, pastor of Cross Life Church downtown Oviedo started a program. He came to the city about six or eight months ago and asked us if we would partner with him in an initiative that he called Secure Oviedo Schools. The initiative was to raise money for camera systems throughout the school system in order to help the law enforcement with securing the perimeter of the schools. He partnered, Pastor Mercer partnered with many other churches in the community. They just used our golf course to introduce our course, and City gave them as our donation use of the course, and they raised well over $70,000 on the first time out. That is enough money to equip Hagerty and Oviedo with the missing camera systems that are needed. So it is not forgotten, and we will work on it, and you know that the chiefs, we have two of them here, have been working on it and will continue. So don't, don't walk out of here and think that things aren't getting done, because they are getting done. So, great job, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Give them around. Michael. Come on up front here, guys, we'll get a picture.
Let Council stay to step in behind you all.
Yeah, why don't you guys come on up front here, come on, please, out to Mark. I forgot to mention, everybody, I have on this guy since he was about... That kid, right? Yeah, you're on. That's right. I brought him to the community, I'm responsible for him.
Lord, please, fix smiles.
Don't give parents.
It'll be all over social media in about five minutes. Great job, guys.
in this community, and the things that they accomplish, and we're going to move from the youth council right into the recognition of the Boy Scouts and WeBlows that we saw in here earlier for their Little Free Library project, which is going to be awesome. So let me turn it over to Drew Bowe. Why don't you come on up?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is fun stuff that we get to do throughout the year, is kind of exciting. We're recognizing three Cub Scout dens from PAC 319 tonight, which constructed three little libraries, which are going to be going at three different locations in our parks, one at Riverside Park, one at the Gymnasium Aquatic Facility, as well as one at Round Lake Park. Our other community partners that's partnering with us is also Oviedo Citizens Action. Ann Bell and Kathy Hunter are here tonight, and I will actually, I'd be remiss if I didn't bring up that actually Ms. Bell brought this to my attention about five years ago, and I kind of dropped the ball, so I wanted to make sure that Ann got, and she's taping it because I told her, I said, she's going to have this on me forever and day, but I wanted to give her recognition because they initially brought it to us. So, and then, of course, Dave Puddles and Sherry Puddles from the Optimus Club, as they will be helping us with the one that's going to be at the gymnasium. And at this time, I would like to introduce a young lady, she came to, she actually contacted the city about a year ago, and Tessa Anadide.
Has she come in, Tessa?
She contacted, and over the last year, we've had a ton of communication, working, actually, it started with one little library, it turned into three little libraries. So I'm going to have Tessa go ahead and introduce all the Cub Scout leaders, as well as the Cub Scouts, and then we're going to bring in the three little libraries for, to show you. And just want to remind you, I know we've got the dog park grant opening this weekend, the ribbon cutting, but we'll also be doing three photo ops this weekend after the dog parks at 10:00, 11:00, and 12:00 with each pack at each location of where the three little libraries are going. So, Counsel, if you can join us, great, and I realize it's a busy Saturday. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Tessa, and then we're going to bring in the library.
This is the problem when you're vertically challenged. So on behalf of PAC 319 leadership, we have our committee chair, Stephanie Fuller, our Cub Master, Jeremy Jardell, and our WeBlows Den Leader, Amanda Blevins. We are so excited to be able to present to you three Little Free Libraries for the city of Oviedo. So every year, the Scouts are required to conduct a community service project, and we really wanted to make sure that the Scouts understood the value of being a leader in the community and giving back. And literacy is one of the challenge areas across our community nationwide, and it's such a key, critical skill to learn very early on. So with the Little Free Libraries motto, they are focused on building community, sparking creativity, and inspiring readers. So now, across Oviedo, we will be able to bring that to all of the residents, which is absolutely wonderful. So with that, I would like to introduce the Cub Scouts. So we have a new den this year, we have the Lion Den, they are siblings of the Bear Den Scouts, so they, excuse me, they participated in building the Little Free Library. So we have Dominic Anadide, and Elloin Greenlee. We also have the Bear Den Scouts who are here, Rowan Greenlee, Aiden Sneed, Roland Anadide.
Just follow Mr. Bowe, guys.
Freddie Espenscheid, Tylin Cuskin, and who is not here tonight is William Kelly. So for the WeBlow Den, those that are here tonight, we have Jackson Long, Everett Jardell, Carter Stewart, Liam Blevins, William Lang, Adric Turner. Those who could not be here tonight are Kayden Restrapo, Lucas Franco, Isaiah Branco, Alexander Gillian, Connor Schridl, Nicholas Poliak, Jacob Cap, Melick Hawkins, Jagran Castillo, Trista Seerfrost, and Olivia Trask. And then finally, from the Arrow of Light Den, we had, for the Arrow of Light, they recently crossed over into Boy Scouts, and tonight is their very first meeting. So out of the 10 Scouts, we had nine crossing over, so tonight, representing the Arrow of Light Den, we have Kelton Fitzgerald. And now, we will present the Little Free Libraries.
All right. So just got to let you know, Counsel, this one will be going to Riverside, this is from Tessa, Ruth, and Tessa is helping us maintain that, Ruth is helping us maintain that. This one is going to Riverside, excuse me, to the Gymnasium, and the Optimus Club will be helping us maintain that, and then the other one will be going around Lake Park, and Oviedo Citizens Action will help us maintain that also, as well as staff.
Oh, great job, everyone, I guess.
I will make a note, staff's all over me about putting one at their Lake Park, so that will be for a couple, get these three going first.
Well, let's get these up, and then we'll get, I'm sure they can build us another one.
Absolutely.
Counsel, why don't we announce, why don't we go down and get a picture with these guys, and gals?
Let's stack that up, guys, have this one, let's put it. Yeah. Have Mr. Fitzgerald move. That's how he's on his... There you go. Now you're good. You guys, before you do this, let's take a picture. You guys, before you do this, let's take a picture. You guys, before you do this, let's take a picture. You guys, before you do this, let's take a picture. You guys, before you do this, let's take a picture. You guys, before you do this, let's take a picture. You guys, before you do this, let's take a picture. Yeah, it ain't just up to 417 anymore, bro.
Well, like I said, awesome kids in this community. All righty, so moving right along, we're up to the first action item, it's the approval of the minutes for the January 22nd, 2019, and the January 23rd regular sessions. Oh, that's because we continued it, all right. Is there a motion to do so?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion on the minutes?
Looks good.
Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number five on our agenda this evening, that's the public comment portion of our meeting. I have no written requests, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address Counsel? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public comment portion and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda this evening is three items, six through eight, what is the pleasure of Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion, and we have a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, the, the first item, I was glad to see that the, that it's being funded with the grant on item six. Item eight, the program, the Recreation Trails Program, I'm, I'm happy that we're putting in for that program, and we're doing the work at Shane Kelly Park. Next year, I spoke to Mr. Cobb about this, next year, I'd like, when we apply for this program, I would like to work on putting the trail between Oviedo and the park and Historic Downtown, and put this program under it, and start working towards that as a goal, as well as to work with the CRA on that.
Okay.
And that's all I had.
Great. Anything else on the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, motion on the table is to adopt as presented. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Moving along, let's see, item nine, 10, 11, public hearings, we have none, first reading ordinance, resolutions, none, so we are up to our discussion items. First item is number 12, give me a moment to catch up on my computer, and number 12 is the Auditor Selection Committee Membership Selections. I'll turn it over to Mr. Cobb for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor. On, in September of 2013, the council adopted ordinance number 1573, which provided for the creation of an auditor selection committee. Our contract with our current auditors is coming due, and it's time again to appoint the committee once again. The, the original committee had three members, of which Mr. Britton is the only remaining member with the city. The other two members have since departed from the city. And so, we would ask that, tonight, we were asking that you appoint, unless Mr. Britton is still interested, but at least two of the members to the committee. Mr. Booth is here, he can help as well to explain if you have any questions about the makeup of the committee and what they would be doing. Primary purpose, obviously, is to review and determine if we need to change auditors, so, with that, Mayor, I'll...
So it's the same as we did last night, we just need two members of council to...
Correct.
Okay. All righty, what is the pleasure of Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You know, as we look at, at this and other things, you know, for the last couple years, we've been, we've been, for lack of a better word, told or pushed to, you know, put everything out to bid, but I, I've always have, and I'll continue on this one, to take a completely different approach to this. You know, we've had this firm for several years, we've won award after award with them. They are of the, the highest integrity. You know, I've worked in, for accounting, or working in accounting departments, and we've had to change audit firms now and then. And the new firms that come in, they come in with questions, and yes, it is time-consuming, but a lot of times, there's some, you know, the, year after year with the same firm, it tends to, you know, breed some complacency. And I think it's good to bring in new firms. Now, if they, you know, if the bid process goes through, and it looks like, you know, that this audit, our accounting firm is the right one, then great. But I think it's great to give other people a chance to at least put out there what they can offer. And then, if they do come in, it gives them a chance, or gives staff and the city a chance to kind of go through the process a little bit, and just kind of reevaluate the, you know, what's been going on. You know, everything's been great, but it's nice to just have, you know, another set of eyes looking at things, so.
Anything else? Anybody? Keith?
Just that, if you need me, I'll be on the committee this year, or if anyone else wants to be on it in my place, that's fine, too.
Okay. Councilman Chudna?
I would tend to agree with Councilman Pollak about going out to bid. It serves a couple purposes. It does look at the cost for the audit itself, and it also keeps the firms who may want the business to present to us. So, I have no issue going out to bid.
Well, Mr. Mayor, just so you'll know, where you're at now is the contract's expired, and so you're in the statutorily required process to procure. So, regardless of which way you go, with the current auditor or a new one, you still have to go through the process.
Okay. Well, it sounds like we have to go through the process either way, and I certainly understand what Councilman Henkin was saying. They have been doing an excellent job, but the process is the process. We need two members. Councilman Britton, you sat on it last time. Councilman Henkin and I are, I don't want to say involved, but, you know, we've been with the existing firm for the longest amount of time. I would volunteer the two to my right. Jeff and Bob, if you don't mind.
Fine.
If you want to take it on, then that's who I would recommend we appoint, if it's okay with everybody.
It's fine.
There you go, guys. Careful what you wish for. All righty. Anything else on that item, Mr. Cobb, or is that all you needed from us? Mr. Boop, anything else that you needed from us on that item?
Everything.
Perfect, okay. And I'm assuming you're going to sit in with them?
Yes.
All right, so it's yourself, and Deputy Mayor, and Councilman Chudna?
And Mr. Britton.
Do you still want to sit in on it?
Do we need three of us? Come on. I'll do it if you want.
Because that'll make four the sit. Three.
I will sit in on it, but I cannot be an active participant in the process. It's highly discouraged that anybody who has any influence over management be a participant on the committee.
Okay.
But we do need to have a minimum of three members.
Well, Keith, you up to it?
No, I'm fine. I'll do it.
There you go.
You bring the donuts, right, Jerry? Sir, you bring the donuts?
I'll bring the donuts.
Brian? Now, the current firm, they get to participate as well, too.
Yes, sir, they will be given.
You know, and listen, I don't disagree, but look, I'm from the old school. I look at it this way, you win me the Super Bowl, I'm not trading you. You know, if you've been a good spouse for 30 years, I'm not dumping you. I mean, that's just the way it is, okay? I feel that way. It's obvious that's not the way, and some in the past order, but that's my thing.
I'm going to text Gina that right now, so you'll feel safe tonight.
I've got a comment. I know I'm just throwing this out there right now, but I saw her in the audience, and I know she's got an accounting background. Ms. McCollum has an accounting background, and I think it would be great to get a citizen from the community. I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
It's going to delay everything. You have to do a whole nother resolution.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's right in the packet.
Gotcha. Okay.
As good an idea that that is, it's not possible the way this is.
Okay, no problem.
All righty, so, now we have everything we need on this item, correct? All right, good. Moving along, we're up to item number 13, multi-district opioid litigation. I will turn this over, I should give it to Mr. Groot, I would assume. Mr. Groot, I'll turn this over to you.
Well, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. You know, you heard from me a good bit at a work session, giving a broad brush and broad outline of this matter, but we have several folks here today, including Mr. Jim Vicarius, who could make a detailed presentation to you, and more importantly, can answer any questions that you might have. So, if that's okay with you, Mr. Mayor?
Sure. However you want to handle it.
Thank you. Maybe a question?
Yeah, of course, if you mind.
Mike, come on up, we'll.
Whoever wants to.
Michael Khan, too. Good evening, members of council. My name is Jim Vicarius. I'm a lawyer here in Seminole County. Just to give you a little background on me, I'm a former president of our county's Bar Association, I'm a former president of our region's Central Florida Trialers Association. Last year, the lawyers of Brevard and Seminole County did me a great honor and voted me onto the Board of Governors of the Florida Bar to represent the 18th Circuit, so Brevard and Seminole Counties. So, it's, I've been doing this for about 25 years, and have tried a lot of cases. Today, we're here to ask you to hire our group of litigators to represent the city of Oviedo in national opioid litigation. Essentially, what has been going on is, over the past two years, cities across the country have been filing state court lawsuits that have been brought into the federal courts, removed into the federal courts, and so many of them were filed across the country, including in Florida, that the federal court decided to create a multi-district litigation process, where there's one federal judge ruling over all the individual lawsuits. That's in the northern districts of Ohio at this point. And the time to start filing claims as a city is now with regards to the opioid litigation, and here's why. It's been going on for a couple of years, but the litigation standpoint is, the federal Judge, Judge Polster, in December entered a very long order. We've given you a copy of that in the agenda items. And essentially, what it says in so many words is, the plaintiffs have stated a claim. The judge says, "I'm not throwing these cases out, we're keeping them in the federal courts, and we're going to give you a trial date." There are some test trials that are coming up in October with some Ohio cities, and the judge is really pushing for some type of resolution before that. Obviously, with any litigation, you never know what's going to happen, but we have a very specific, and I believe that a resolution will come. So, now's the time to file a claim. In the memo that you were given, there's a great quote in here from the order, from Judge Polster, and he states, "It is accurate to describe the opioid epidemic as a man-made plague, 20 years in the making. The pain, death, and heartache it has wrought cannot be overstated." And what's interesting about what the judge says about this quote is, he states that all the parties agree to this, even the opioid manufacturers agree about what's happened. Of course, they're disagreeing about their liability for what happened, but everybody agrees that this is definitely a plague that's hurting all the cities, counties, state, across the nation. One of the things that I like about the group that I'm with is the, one of our litigators, a man named Peter Weinberger out of Ohio, is one of the three plaintiff's liaisons. So, the city of Oviedo, should they choose to hire our litigation group, will be guaranteed a voice at the table, so to speak. There's only three, there's only two other lawyers that have this status. So, I'll introduce my co-counsel from Brevard County, Michael Khan, and let him talk a little bit, but he represents a number of cities across the state, and one of his, in addition to doing opioid litigation, one of the things he does is represent cities on panhandling resolutions, and defends them in federal court, and has won quite a few of them, too. So, he's a great litigator. Michael, would you say a few words?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members, Mr. Groot, and Mr. City Manager. Yes, my specialty, I'm a trial lawyer. I do intellectual property litigation, and I have the privilege of having what still is the longest jury trial in Brevard County on a theft of trade secrets case, but I do have, and have represented about 30 cities and counties in the state of Florida, doing not just panhandling ordinances, but all First Amendment that they may have ordinances and defending them. But here tonight, we're at a different crossroads. The crossroads is to prosecute Big Pharma for what they've done to Oviedo. And basically, I was brought into this group as well, for the people that I know and the litigation that I've done. And I can't stress enough how proud we are to have Jim Vicarius in our group, because he'll be the one that's reporting to you on the progress of this litigation. And he's a tremendous trial lawyer, and has been recognized by Central Florida, by Brevard County, by Seminole County, and is now a Board of Governors. And we're proud to have him in the group. The litigation right now, when I represented Palm Bay, I made an outrageous claim. I've been on, I'm on retainer for them for their First Amendment work, and they know me there. So, I said that if you would hire me, I said, "I will fire, file a state claim, a claim in state court within seven days." And so, they hired me, and that's what I did. This was in the early days, and I was proud to be one of the early litigators for opioid. That's when the litigation was actually focused in the state court. Well, now, we've evolved, and the litigation now is being fast-tracked in federal court in what Jim has described as multi-district litigation. We have a very aggressive judge who is bent on settlement in this case, and so there's going to be bellwether trials at the end of this year. He's targeted three cases, it'll be tried by the end of the year or settled. We're betting on settlement. So, the odds are what's happening here, and it's kind of like, at this point, honestly, a race to the courthouse. What the goal is, is to go ahead and file an action in federal court. But here's what we've learned in Palm Bay, because we're one of the few cities in the state of Florida that have gone all the way through the process now. There's another step beyond filing. It's what's known as giving a plaintiff fact sheet, because the damages model is still fluid. It is not fixed as far as the damages. We know that the damages are substantial, and so the city, working through your city manager, Jim, Mr. Groot, and two individuals, one of whom is Peter Weinberger's handpicked associate, will work through a plaintiff fact sheet with you all to further develop this. So, the process will be, you know, hopefully, if you choose us, then we will go ahead and circulate a potential draft complaint, but we'll also get you involved in working out this plaintiff fact sheet as soon as you can. And so, that's a lesson that we learned in Palm Bay. And it was just because we got in this very early. So, we would be privileged to represent you. And one thing that I offered Palm Bay, that through Jim, and Jim and I have discussed this, and I appreciate also, Mike, your help, you know, with your contact with this city, basically, is this, we give what no other group can give. We give you a person that you know that's going to be here, and I'll come back whenever you want me to, but Jim Vicarius will be the person that takes the pulse of what's going on this litigation, and literally, and Jim has promised me this, and I believe him, anytime you want him, that's what I've told Palm Bay, that's what I've told St. Johns County and St. Augustine, that I've brought into our group as representing them, and we're, we have other counties, too. Manatee, Marion County, Bing Bend Counties are all represented by this group. And what I've said is, anytime you want to know about the progress of this litigation, you don't have to worry about what state I'm in, you don't have to worry about, you just get me on the phone, I'll be there, like that. And that's derivatively through Jim, and even for me, okay? I'll be there. So, we would love to represent you in helping subdue Big Pharma for the scourge that it's doing to your citizens. Thank you, and I'm here to also answer any question that you have. We're very up to date on where the litigation is now.
Mr. Mayor, could I just do one thing? Could you all make it clear to the city council what the potential damages and benefits that would, damages that could be procured, and therefore benefits to the city for the attainment of those damages, and any potential downside to the being involved in the litigation?
Good question.
Be glad to do that. First of all, there's any number of different, what we'll say, causes and buckets of damage. The pattern lawsuit, the beginning, when I had to do this lawsuit, Mr. Groot, it was drawing, because I'd given my word to Palm Bay, I had to draw on five different complaints through, and I was proud to do it. I spent a lot of time, and on behalf of our group, we drew together, and I put out a complaint. Now, it's been actually developed into a pattern lawsuit, which is particularized for your county. There's roughly nine different causes of action, for negligence, gross negligence, public nuisance, a federal RICO, that is a racketeering count, a fiduciary claim, which is false advertising claims. And specifically, I'm going to list off a number of buckets of potential damage claims for all municipalities, some of which you may have, some of which you may not. But the damage model is, to begin with, population-based. So, that's going to be one reflective, the idea of what amount of money per capita the damages overall of opioids has cost your city. Second, they will look at the opioid deaths, which hopefully are minimal, but they will. And even though, hopefully, Oviedo has very few, if you take it proportionately to your population, you'll see that it actually extrapolates or conflates to something significant. But I'm going to read off the series of buckets of different damage claims that this, that may be applicable to you. There's population that's reflective to that, there's opioid deaths, there is an opioid specific programs, there's medication-assisted treatments, i.e. Narcan and Methadone, there is addiction programs and therapies, there are overdose death costs beyond just the medical, which are medical examiner costs or burial costs, there are child protective services, there are neonatal abstinence syndromes, and because babies get addicted in your town, unfortunately, and in your city, to opioids, that's a tragedy. And so, there are programs that are for that. There are law enforcement costs, there's employment costs, there's municipal agencies, and there's homelessness and joblessness. And what that means is, the opioid crisis has derivative impacts on your city. You know, homelessness, people that are now, and people that are subject to addictions, they're now in jail, and their spouses and other relatives are now homeless, they're jobless. So, there's any number of different, to answer your question, Mr. Groot, damage possibilities that can apply to the city of Oviedo. But by naming these, one of the remedies that we are suing for because of the public nuisance count is what's known as abatement. There is an opioid-specific programs. There's medication-assisted treatments, i.e. Narcan and Methadone. There is addiction programs and therapies. There are overdose death costs beyond just the medical, which are medical examiner costs or burial costs. There are child protective services. There are neonatal abstinence syndromes. And because babies get addicted in your town, unfortunately, and in your city, to opioids, that's a tragedy. And so there are programs that are for that. There are law enforcement costs. There's employment costs. There's municipal agencies. And there's homelessness and joblessness. And what that means is the opioid crisis has derivative impacts on your city. You know, homelessness, people that are now, and people that are subject to addictions, they're now in jail. And their spouses and other relatives are now homeless. They're jobless. So there's any number of different, to answer your question, Mr. Groot, damage possibilities that can apply to the city of Oviedo. But by naming these, one of the remedies that we are suing for because of the public nuisance count is what's known as abatement. An abatement is a far-flung remedy that says that Big Pharma should pay the town, should pay the town for those very programs that I've talked about. So when you talk about programs to help the addicted, educative programs for the children, and many other programs, abatement says, you've caused this damage, Big Pharma, now you fix it, and you're going to pay for it. For advertising, you know, now advertising, you recall with Big Tobacco, you saw when that hit, okay, what the tobacco firms had to do. They had to advertise against themselves, and they have to pay for those sorts of impacts. Now, one of the very powerful things about this litigation as opposed to tobacco, what happened to towns and cities and counties, they got hurt by the tobacco lawsuits because the states sucked all the money up. And Judge Pollster is committed not to let that happen in that litigation. So what you have is, you have the states as plaintiffs, but now, for the first time, unlike the tobacco litigation, you have counties and you have cities, which can partake directly from the damages to the damage models. So...
So you have a formula, and then if there are damages that are proven for each city, that formula then progresses down so that each claimant, city, county, gets its proportionate share?
Exactly, which is unlike what the tobacco...
I think the council understands that, but, and I know Police Chief, former Police Chief Chudnow understands the law enforcement aspect of it very much. But what is the potential downside, if any?
Okay. Right now, the potential downside is, you can't ever say in a lawsuit, zero. But you can say approaching zero because of the following things. First of all, the question usually comes, this is not the first question, time I've faced this question, Mr. Groot, comes at me because, well, what if we lose? You know, are there any fee-shifting provisions if we lose? You've got two potentials. One is the suit frivolous. Florida law, under Section 57105, to be precise, provides for damages against a party who's bringing a frivolous lawsuit. Well, let me check that box right now. Since what Big Pharma has done in October, as a matter of fact, we had a meeting of all of our lawyers in the group, and Peter Weinberger gave us the pulse of where the suit is. Jim referred to him before. He's one of three lawyers nationwide on the Liaison Committee. He talks to the judge every day. It's an unusual circumstance. There is no attorney-client privilege in multi-district litigation. So every day, Peter's on the phone with the judge or his assistant. And what Peter lectured us on was the following: Big Pharma put up a big show in filing a motion to dismiss these lawsuits that have been filed. And in a 103-page opinion by the magistrate that Judge Pollster assigned, they were across the board defeated, except for a minor one, which was the, a public nuisance statute located in Ohio. So it was almost a total victory for us, the plaintiffs. What does that mean to you? That means the lawsuit is not frivolous. So check that box. The court has already said that we, the plaintiffs, have stated a case, so this is not a frivolous lawsuit. So Judge Pollster took the magistrate's recommendations, because he's the judge, and he agreed with them and adopted the 103 pages, with one exception. He said, you know, magistrate, when you sustained the objection to the Ohio public nuisance law? He reversed him on that. So it was 100%, which shows the judge's inclinations. Then the next box is if we lose. Now, you can start off by saying this: There are people in Big Pharma right now, it's much better positioned than tobacco. You had to fight liability every step of the way in tobacco. Already, Mr. Groot, what they have as far as liability, there are people in Big Pharma that have already been sentenced and are in prison. So the idea that we have a frivolous or a losing lawsuit is minimized. But here's probably the most powerful thing: If you sign with this group, and let's say there's a bellwether case at the end of the year, and let's say, God forbid, which I sincerely doubt, it doesn't go our way, you can bail out. In other words, this is not something that's written in stone, our representation. If all of a sudden, something doesn't go our way, I mean, I know this is the way I practice. I've been practicing 41 years. I'm a Duke Law graduate, so I apologize to any UNC fans here. I'm so sorry. But the point is this, and Jim's the same way, that's why we elected him our Board of Governor. If there's instant news that you need to know, like there's a bad turn of events that would be nationwide, we'll be the first to tell you. We'll get you. And if you decide, no, we don't want to chance this, then you're out. They're not going to try a case with these bellwether cases, Chicago, you know, and other major cities. Oviedo's not going to be a bellwether trial, you know, suspect or participant. So we would be proud to represent you, and we promise, what I've promised, the jurisdictions that we represent before. We promise you prompt, honest, efficient service, and we're going to help you for your constituents, whom you'll be fighting for when you choose us, hopefully. We're going to help you subdue Big Pharma and stop the scourge that they foisted upon your citizens. Period. Thank you.
Just to summarize real quickly, so should the city council allow you to file a claim in the litigation on behalf of the city?
Yes.
The city would then be in line for potential, to receive potential damages in a favorable resolution. But if anything occurred in the interim that would potentially be of such a nature that the council would want to withdraw its claim, it could clearly do that, and it would be in good shape at that time.
Without question. Absolutely.
I just think that's important to clarify that. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mr. Groot.
Mayor?
The bellwether trials are coming towards the end of the year. So they're scheduled in October. And as we all know, just because a trial is scheduled doesn't mean it happens, but it looks like this judge really wants to push this along.
Great. Let me see if we have any questions from anyone on the council. We'll start with Councilman Chudnow, because he was certainly on the front lines of this with our current chief.
Well, not so much questions, but I can say that, for the best of my recollection, over about a two, two-and-a-half-year period, we probably made over 130 arrests for selling of opiates after the prescriptions were filled, probably with two, three officers working, working a couple locations, 40 to 50 staffing hours, not to, and also including the cost of court time or depositions that the officers had gone to. So the problem exists. Big Pharma has already paid dearly, some of the pharmacies have paid multi-multi-million dollars in fines for the over-prescription and over-delivery of the opioid. So, and they continue to not hold themselves accountable for that.
That's exactly right, Chief.
It's a seller.
And that's right. There's unique things about this litigation, again, adverse to tobacco. There's three separate or four separate people, defendants. One is the manufacturers, okay, like Purdue, Janssen. But there's also now theories that have had traction in the court for the delivery systems, the wholesalers. And that's who you're talking about, McKesson, some of the most rich corporations in the country, if not the world. And then you have the smaller individual, but the manufacturers and the wholesalers are the targets, really, of this lawsuit and these lawsuits. And they can well afford this. And you're absolutely right, Chief. There's been previous settlements that have, haven't scratched the surface of the damages. There was a 60 Minutes on this. I don't know whether you all saw it. It featured Mike Miller, who was former Attorney General, State Attorney General, and they were listing the potential damages. It's going to be the largest damage lawsuit in the history of this country at between, I think the claims were $200 billion to $300 billion. And that is not, that's probably conservative, what I think the entire damages are. But we would just appreciate the chance to represent your city.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions?
We've provided you a synopsis of the group at each one of your seats.
Let's hang on one second. Deputy Mayor, anything?
No.
Keith?
No, I think I'm good. We got a pretty good briefing from Lonnie at the workshop, so I think I'm comfortable with it.
Councilman Hackett?
I agree.
Talk about the fees.
The fees are included in your booklet, Mr. Mayor, and I'll just grab the...
So sliding scales, there's one percentage for, you know, a resolution prior to filing a lawsuit, but obviously, you know, we just shared with you right now, we're going to file a lawsuit, so it'll be, you know, the next percentage.
Right. They're actually less than the usual. It's 20% if...
What page are we on? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. As a matter of fact, I was...
Page 20 of the booklet, page 20 of the booklet. Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, that's all right.
Okay, here it is. I see it.
Right. It's 20% and the 22.5% are the really, I think, appropriate percentages. The gross amount is 20% if the claims are settled prior to the first day of trial, and it's 22.5% of the gross amount recovered after a trial on the merits. That would be for Oviedo. And what I mean by that is, Oviedo is, I'd be shocked if Oviedo was ever involved in that per se trial on this. So I think the relevant percentage is 20. And we all think that they're going to be settled, but there may be some, you know, some sort of a dust-up or major trial in between now and settlement. But the odds are infinitesimal against it being with Oviedo as a party. It'll be the bellwether trials that Mr. Vicarius has referred to, and then we'll see which way all this litigation is going, as Mr. Groot referred to.
To give you some comparison to what that 20% figure is, in my law firm, we represent personal injury clients, and we go to trial often. Our trial percentage that we charge people is 40%. And that's on an individual basis. So because we have some economy of scale here, we're only charging essentially half, 20%.
And if there's no recovery, there's no fees to the city.
Zero.
I'm reading that right here. So what is the pleasure of counsel on this? There's a motion in the recommendation, I believe, from Mr. Groot. Mr. Groot, what is your recommendation? Let me go to you first.
Well, let me just say one thing that you don't need to, you can have a competitive procurement, but you don't need to with legal services, okay? Because of the unique nature, this is an extender group, obviously. I can't tell you that there's any other better group that could be involved in this litigation. You have one of the three nationwide attorneys who's involved at the top of the group. And you have former Seminole County Bar President, member of the Board of Governors, at the, and I mean, no offense, at the bottom of the group, the local, the local person.
Yeah, but then we got this McLean guy.
I don't know anything about him. Anyway, but I don't see where you can go wrong, and there always is a way to step out, as was described tonight. So I see no downside. I would recommend that you proceed, and we will be able to test the waters as it goes forward with the bellwether trials, and you can make future decisions as needed. Or hopefully, and I don't mean this in a negative vein, because this whole thing is a tragedy, but hopefully recoup some of the, if not all, of the expenses of the city that it has incurred during this horrible wrath of events that's occurred in our society over the past, how many years, Chief, when we, council member?
Since 1999.
Yeah, we've... Twenty years. It's just gotten worse.
At least 20 years. My recommendation is that if I, I don't typically say it this way, but if I was a member of the council, I would feel totally confident in retaining this group.
Okay. So what is the pleasure of counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I move to authorize Mr. Vicarius to engage in federal multi-district opioid litigation on behalf of the city on a contingency basis, as agreed upon between the city and Mr. Vicarius at the city council meeting.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor?
I'm good.
Councilman Chudnow?
I think you were my second, right?
Well, I was. Like I said, I know as far as the impact on the police department has been and on fire rescue, we're carrying, the police department is carrying night cam now, and they use it on a regular basis. So I think the right people have to be held accountable.
Councilman Britton?
I'm good.
Councilman Hackett?
I agree.
All righty. Well, hearing nothing further, there is a motion on the table to engage Mr. Vicarius and the firm. So all those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Good luck, gentlemen.
All righty. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
We look forward to representing you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. All righty. So the next item up is number 14. But before I go to number 14, I want to revisit number 12 for a second. Mr. Cobb, when I was flipping through number 12, it seems that if we wanted to appoint somebody from outside of the city council to be on the committee, it's by resolution, not by ordinance. Did I read that wrong?
I believe that's correct.
So if it's by resolution, it would just happen at the next meeting?
We could.
Right. It wouldn't be where we have to advertise at ordinance and do two readings.
No.
All right. So then that was my mistake, so I'm going to clarify that. And then, Megan, you were volunteered to be on this committee without being asked. Do you have any interest in serving?
What's the kind of [inaudible]?
Why don't we do this? Why don't you sit with Mr. Groot for a second? I'll move on to our next item, and then we can go back and revisit before we leave this evening.
Is it with Mr. Booth?
Oh, Mr. Booth, I'm sorry. Sorry, Jerry. All right. Let's move on to item number 14 while we work that out. And, all righty, this is a discussion item on the, on Mitchell Hammock roadway evaluation. The staff is working on many different things. This was asked for by Mr. Pollock, just to kind of tie it all together, give the newer members a good understanding of what is going on. Mr. Cobb, did you want to do a brief introduction of this, or do you have anything? No?
Actually, Mayor, I felt like the staff did a fantastic job on your report and have explained it very well.
All righty. Well, then why don't I just go right to Deputy Mayor, since he asked for it, and then we'll work off of that direction, if that's okay with you?
Okay.
There you go.
So in the packet, there's a discussion about kind of the next steps. I was, I had asked to see if we could get the ball rolling on looking at widening Mitchell Hammock Road to alleviate some of the traffic congestion. The, in the packet, there's some steps that we could take in order to kind of move forward in that direction. There's a CPS, which is a, let's see, what's the definition of it in here? It's kind of a smaller study, just to define, to figure out what we need to do, you know, and whether it's something that's feasible. And then there's the PDNE. The CPS, if we get that, we have to do the PDNE within a year or two in order to allow it to stay valid. The PDNE is a much more expensive process. They were looking at close to, and here it talks about being close to $700,000 at a minimum, or $750,000 at a minimum. Could be much more expensive than that. But that PDNE is what we could use in order to get federal funding, state and federal funding. We have to have that completed in order to get funding for this project. What my thoughts were, you know, if you look at, I believe it was the second attachment in this, it has a map of the city, but on the right-hand side, it talks about... in this, it has a map of the city, but on the right-hand side, it talks about when, you know, projects were needed. This project in that, in there states that it was needed back in 2015, which I think, you know, most of us can agree that there's an issue there. So my thought is, is, you know, I think we should do the, you know, do the CPS, or at least, you know, see if we can fund that. But by doing that, we would also have to kind of make a commitment that within two years of doing that, that we would do the PDNE. Now, in the evaluation here, it does state that we wouldn't want to do the actual construction work while the work is being done on 419 and 426, because that would, that would cause, you know, construction, both arteries going to the east of the city, or going east or west in the mornings. So I think that this is something that we could, we could definitely look at and see where we want to, you know, I wanted to try to get a flavor of the rest of the council on moving forward with at least getting an idea of what it would take, a dollar amount, and then that way it could give staff a direction to go out and try to see if we can get some funding from the state and from the federal government. That's all I have.
Okay. I'll go to Councilman Chudnow first. Do you have any thoughts, opinions?
Well, I know that during certain parts of the day, Mitchell Hammock is crowded, especially in the morning and the evening, eastbound and westbound, depending on the daytime. To get a feasibility on what the cost was or the impact would be, I don't see any harm in doing that.
Okeydoke. Anything else, Chief?
Nope.
Councilman Britton?
Yeah, it's about time. We're going to need to do this from a strategic standpoint. It's, and I suspect it'll turn into some sort of amendment or addendum to the Transportation Master Plan, but yeah, we need to start planning now for the eventual widening or alternatives to Mitchell Hammock.
Councilman Hackett?
Well, I think it's a worthy goal, but I think, you said it at the last meeting, I don't want to give anybody false hope, because, you know, it's somewhere written in one of our transportation plans that it has to be done. But I mean, when I think about this, I think of Duke Energy moving those poles out of there. That's millions. I know how long it's taken us to get 426 and 419, and we finished one phase, we're going to be starting another one. I mean, and everybody's got to remember, we have said this forever, you know, once 426 and 419 is done, now you have two east-west routes going, and a lot of people will discover that, especially coming from out east and from Orange County, and they're going to go straight, and they're going to make that left on Lockwood. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I just think, for right now, even if you funded the 250, or even if you funded the 750, we've been working on 426 and 419 with the state and the federal government, and trips to Washington and Tallahassee, and you see how long this takes. I mean, it's not a bad idea to look at, but, you know, we got to finish one project first, because I truly believe when that, when 426 and 419 is all the way done and Phase 3 is done, you know, Mitchell Hammock may be a different thing. You may, you know, if we don't have to widen it, because we have two east-west routes now, you know, especially if further development doesn't come out in Orange County and things like that, you know, we may be okay. I'm not saying not to look at it. I don't know that I want to spend a quarter of a million dollars to look at it, though. I mean, just the Duke Energy aspect alone, and Brian, help me if I'm right on, Mr. Mayor, I mean, to move those poles out of there is millions of dollars, is it not?
It's quite expensive, yes.
And they don't want to do it. We've asked them, you know, a couple, you know, a couple, a couple of years ago, we've talked to them about it, and I mean, so I mean, is it a bad thing to look at it? Yes, but I think you got to let the whole transportation plan play out. We got to finish what we're, what we're doing on that road, and honestly, when that's finished, we may not need to have a need for that. And I don't know if that's the case. I'm not, I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but I just think we got to finish the first one first. That may fix what we're trying to fix. And then other things, like Mitchell Hammock's extension, that we were supposed to somewhere along the line, you know, go through the back of Wind Dixie and cut out to 419, you know, little things like that are things that I think might be, might be a little better. It's not a bad idea, but it'd be so far off even if we spent the money to do it, and we have something that we think is going to fix most of the traffic. So, you know, either way, I mean, you can take a look at it lightly, but I don't know about a quarter of a million, three-quarters of a million dollars to go that route until we finish the first one.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. Well, I mean, having sat here through council spending millions upon millions of dollars studying this, I think, Mr. Cobb, I think the first thing, and I understand the deputy mayor's goal, because we get, we get the same concerns from citizens every day, but I think you need to provide everybody with a full copy of the east-west corridor study before we go down this rabbit hole. Because what you'll find in that study is that the key is the parallel route to begin with. What you'll also find in that study is that unless Mitchell Hammock, we get it out before 19, if you six-lane it, you're just six-laning it to a dead end. You know, that, it's not going to fix anything, and to spend another quarter million, I mean, I really think, I used to have them all, the boxes here somewhere at City Hall with all the studies.
I have it in my office.
Okay. Right. I think it's imperative, before we consider this, that all the members who want them are given them to read them, because the data's there. You know, the license plate studies are there, the corridor studies are there, the, if you, even if you do a $250,000 study, which is only going to last 12 to 16 months, and then you're committed to another million, million and a half, because it's not going to cost $700,000 for PDNE, it's going to be much more than that. Let's say for some reason you don't do it after 12, 16 months, you just flush $250,000 away. But all it's going to show you is what we already have in a lot of these reports. For instance, on the west side, or east side of Mitchell Hammock, east of 434, even if you move the power lines, where are you going to put the water? That was one of the major problems, because you've got that low point by East Bridge, and so where do you pump the water from that point? You start taking out homes in Alafera Woods in order to build ponds. The connection behind the Wind Dixie, that's the key, even if it was still only four lanes. But the problem we have there is the road was originally designed to do that when it was a pasture. Then they built the Wind Dixie, and then they built the homes. So that can be done, but then you wipe out all of the houses that are on the, let's see, that would be the north side of Akana. So I'll let you go and tell that to those folks. There's other alternatives here. Six-laning Mitchell Hammock west of 434 is something that is a possibility, and there could be programs through the state, if we can prove that it increases traffic flow to the greenway, that there would be some dollars available for it. Mr. Cobb and I, when we had our meeting with, with the Expressway Authority, what was that, about two years ago, Brian? Year and a half ago?
Yes, sir.
Brought that up to us. The county is also looking at, and I know it's not official from the county, but they've got it on scratch paper right now, is the Slavia Road extension, which will go from Slavia, across the sod farms, and unfortunately pop out on Dr. Stoner instead of at Alafera Woods Boulevard, but, you know, that can be looked at later on, which will increase capacity as well. The extension of 426 is done up to the high school. High school out to Oviedo Boulevard, or out to the bowling alley, excuse me, is getting ready to go in, the shovels are getting ready to go into the ground. Last time I was at Metro Plan, I think they told us we're about 70 or 80% done with right of way acquisition when I asked the FDOT guy. So we're getting there. It's been a long haul, and we don't have to revisit why we're here, we all know why we're here. Because they constrain the roads. So what are our problems when you look at, when you look at traffic in the city? It's the state and the county roads. Those are your problems. Now, the county has just released the money to do the PDNE on 434, which is needed. The 426 is underway. I mean, we actually put the money, not we, the citizens of the city and the city council back in 2002 or '03, put the money, our second generation sales tax dollars towards the PDNE study, just to accelerate 419, 426. They weren't looking at that, the road, until we accelerated it. So there's other things we have to get done before we start chasing this rabbit hole, because it's, yes, it's necessary, but we already know the cost of what would have to occur to do that eastern side. The western side, and I think it was in that east-west corridor study, was the side they said could conceivably be done, was west. But we got to get a hold of that study. I haven't, I haven't read it in so many years, but we have the one Whit Blanton did, then we have the, there was a north-south corridor study, but that's when they were looking at the grid system, but the 434 is mentioned in that one as being a key. The east-west clearly states all the problems, or not problems, challenges with Mitchell Hammock. So I, nobody disagrees that Mitchell Hammocks are there currently, but we're also working on fixing it, so, I mean, I don't know. I don't know if I'd be comfortable spending all that money on a study to sit on a shelf, because Brian has a box of those in his office, that I'm sure if we add it up, it's millions and millions of dollars. I used to sit here in the council chambers and just order a traffic study on everything. I can't even remember how many we've done from different consultants. And then we finally rolled it all into the master plan, which is what we have in front of us here. And a lot of what's been implemented, but a lot of things that are on this master plan can't be implemented. I mean, Doctor's Drive connecting, you know, that's, that's, that's going to probably never happen. Hillcrest Street connecting, you know, that was supposed to connect right over. Hillcrest maybe, but not up to Doctor's Drive. Lindsey Lane, that can't happen, but Wood Street can, and it's in the works. The Slavia Road extension, that, let the county do that. If they want to do it, heck, we'll support them. You know, there's other things on here that could be achievable, that we should, in my opinion, spend our dollars on, but again, that's...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
You know, you brought up a good point, you know, license plate checks on some of these studies that we've done through the years, and you know, you constantly get beat up up here, because people don't have the information. You know, there's so much traffic in the city, there's so much traffic, well, half of it is not ours. And, you know, 426 and 419, we've been beating this. I remember when we started it, and you know, it was 80-something million dollars, and we got one phase done. You know, I truly believe, when that's done, and barring any massive development out east that's out of our control, whatever happens, we're good. You know, Oviedo on the park? Mitchell Hammock is so crowded because of Oviedo on the park? Yes, it is, and you all voted for it. We didn't put it in there. We put it out on the ballot, and you all said, yep, that's what we want, we want our jewel. But we're fixing that, too. So I think if everybody's just a little patient, let that, let that road get done. I mean, I don't disagree with Councilman Pollak. I've said it a million times, man, it'd be nice if Mitchell Hammock punched all the way through, but I think you got to let this one, one project go. And like I said, barring any craziness out east, we're going to be good. Our traffic's going to flow, because everybody that comes that way, they're going straight, right down to the 417, and I'm making that left on Lockwood anymore. We're going to be good. And I think the goal that everybody's trying to get to is to have much a better flowing city. That's it. And we've been on that for 10 years, and honestly, you know, how many times have we, have we been up in Washington, and we've been at Tallahassee begging for money for it? Well, it's all coming together now, you know? So I think once that's done, we'll, we'll be in good shape. I always say with Oviedo, there's so many different things that happen through the years, and we either fix them, or there's a plan to fix them, and we're just waiting, waiting for the money. So, but yeah, I would tend to agree with you. Let's, let's hold off on that and just keep pushing, get that Phase 2 done as quickly as possible, and then we should see some, some big improvement. Good.
So, Mr. Cobb, can we get those studies for everybody?
Yes, sir.
Before we make a decision on this? I mean, it seems like there may be three in the dais right now who would want to consider that, but I think before they consider that, it would be prudent for everybody to read what we have. And take the time, I mean, they're thick. I mean, it's not, not an easy read, but I think it would be an enlightening read, and then we can revisit this in, you know, a month, two months, something like that, once you have, have the studies out there. There was another, there was another east-west study, though, too. There's two of them up there. There's the, there's the big one that Whit did, and then there was a thinner...
Oh, that was the executive summary.
Okay.
You have an east-west study, and you have a north-south study.
Make sure everybody gets both of them.
You have the old, the old study that was done for the original conference of plan. That was back in the late '80s, it was done as well.
Oh, yeah, there's that one up there.
That's the bypass plan.
What's the other one? Post Buckley, who is that?
Yeah, that's it. Post Buckley. That's the, that's the one that was done for...
Now, if you want, if you want to see a report that if they would have built all the roads, everything would be hunky-dory, read that one. That one, that one was written on a typewriter. That's how, that's how old that was.
You know, can you imagine, too, you mentioned constrained roads, can you imagine if our predecessors way back in the '80s said, you know what? Keep coming. We wouldn't have any of these issues now, you know? And they left us to deal with it. Sometimes you're in a period of time, and you say, well, it's good now, you know? And you don't realize how fast, you know, 40, 50 years goes by, and you're, and you're stuck with those problems. All they had to do back then in the '80s is say, yep, keep coming, you're good. And they stopped it. That's why, once you get west of the 417, you see that nice highway in Winter Springs, we could have had that.
It would have went right through.
It's called, it's called vision and looking down, and unfortunately, us and some of you that may come up here in the future, you're going to have to deal with the same thing. And people are going to be yelling at you like it's your fault, and it's really not. But what you do is you put in a program like we have, and you fix them, you know? So...
Well, Bob, this is your discussion. We, we only took it, but I think you should read the studies.
Right. And I agree. If, Mr. Cobb, if you could get the studies, I would, I would gladly read them. I'm just trying to, this is something that I think needs, needs attention, because it takes so long to, to get the ball rolling and for it to actually happen. And, you know, and I, and I agree that the 426, 419, that all the construction and all the work for that and the widening will alleviate some of the traffic constraints on Mitchell Hammock. But I still think it's something that, that needs to be considered. So if I could get those studies, that'd be great, and I would, I would love to go through them, and then we can kind of go from there. I'm just, I mean, I know about the, about relocating power lines, the, the water issue. I would, you know, hope that we could come up with some sort of solution that didn't require removing homes, but, you know, we, you know, at least maybe even just the east, or I'm sorry, the west side, like you were saying. But the more, the longer we wait, the more growth and development's going to get on top of the road to where the road's not going to have any room to, to expand after a while, so... But if I could just get those studies, I would, I would love to go through them, so I appreciate it.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Councilman Chudnow, did you want a copy of them also?
Please. I would assume we've all read them.
I'm good.
Keith, you've read them, right? Do you want to reread?
Nope. I've seen enough.
All right.
So just two copies?
Sounds like two copies for now.
Okay.
We can share them after, after they're done. We can share them after, after they're done. All righty, so that's the end of the item, our discussion items, and now we're gonna move on to the revisit and see who would like to serve or not after your council.
It didn't sound like a death sentence, so, no, yeah, I'd be happy to serve on the, on that committee.
All righty, great.
Thanks.
You're getting a reprieve, man. Keith, would you still like to serve? Or make it a committee of four?
If Jerry wants me to, I will.
Jerry, would you like it to be a committee of four or a committee of three? Because Councilman Britton said he will serve, and we will add Megan, or we can cut Keith and just have a committee of three. Your choice. You still want to serve, Keith? It's up to you.
I'll, I'll let you guys do it. That's fine.
Just let the three?
Yeah.
All right. Brian, can you then bring us a resolution at the next meeting? Because it's not gonna hold anything up then, right, Jerry? Thank you. You can blame him. All righty. And Brian, you're up for your report when you're done.
I have no report, Mayor.
What? We like that. Mr. Groot, how about you?
I just have one thing. I was at the last meeting. I understand there was a consensus reached during a report about changing the code relative to temporary signs to allow six off-premise as opposed to two.
Correct.
And there was a desire to get the ordinance before you as soon as possible. And Dr. Kree is working on an ordinance which that can be folded into, but unless there's objection, the, we can treat that as zoning in progress and go ahead and start applying the new standard while the ordinance is being enacted and processed and enacted, so that's, that-
So, that'll allow folks to get the, the open house signs, garage sale signs. Nothing's gonna change other than we'll issue six stickers instead of two.
That's correct. So, unless there's objection, staff's gonna treat that as zoning in progress, and we'll proceed in that way.
Any objections from council?
It's done then. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Groot. Uh, Councilman Henkin, you're up first.
Uh, just one, one thing. So, Friday night, we had the pleasure of sending off Chief Lars in his retirement. That was a very bittersweet event, you know. I said that when he was here at his last meeting, you know. When I look over, and I don't see him here tonight, it's a little different feeling as you see these guys you sort of grew up with, you know, leaving, but a well-deserved retirement. That is, that is a guy who's just, there just are no words. He is such a good man, and, you know, I thought about it. I was saying to Gina on the way home from that, I said, you know, how many times were your, and you can probably all attest to this, your kids were sick, you know, your parents were in the hospital, and you'd look up, and there would be Lars there, you know, giving you this great comfort and, and the caring. I mean, he's, he's just one of a kind, so I just want to wish him well again. Hopefully, he's not watching. I doubt he is, but we just want to send him off. And then just to tell you all, you sort of met Chief Buchanan. We have an equally talented fire chief now, you know. Jeff kind of stayed behind the scenes a lot and was doing a lot of the, the things that, that impacted us all, but we didn't really see it. So, now he's out in front, and we are, we will not miss a beat. We'll miss Lars, but we are in very, very capable hands. So, Jeff, welcome, welcome aboard. I know you guys love you. We love you, so just wish you all the best in our, as being our new chief. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great. Uh, Councilman Britton, you're up. Oh, wait, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Councilman Chudnow, pardon me.
I just real quick, I just have two items. For those who were at the law enforcement car show on a few Saturdays ago, was, the weather was great. It was well-attended and a lot of squad cars out there, a lot of muscle cars, a lot of antique, so always a good one. And just to note that the Oviedo Police Foundation is having their annual golf tournament on March 1st. That's Friday, March 1st, with the tee-off at 9 o'clock. All golfers are welcome, good or bad. Obviously, bad ones are out there, because I'll be there. But it's always a good event, and all the proceeds go to the foundation, which helps the police department. That's all I have.
Great. Uh, Councilman Britton, you're up now. I'm sorry about that.
Just a couple of quick items. One, Drew, Drew is here. Hey, had, had a lot of fun at the 5K run the other day. The rain stayed away, and we survived. Us old guys survived the run. You, Mr. Mayor, you've mentioned the, the golf tournament for the support of the safety program for-
Secure Oviedo Schools.
Secure Oviedo School. That was a great event. The amount of money they raised is well on the way of accomplishing the goal, and I think that's a great thing. We could, we could do something like that. And finally, I just wanted to mention, and I haven't seen any announcements, but we lost a very good friend a couple of weeks ago. Fred Kruger passed away suddenly. I got to know him a little bit better over the last year or so in the bowling league. It was just a wonderful man, so I would hope everyone would keep him and his family in their thoughts and prayers, and, and he's gonna be missed, so. That's all I have.
Member of our Arts Board. He's on the Arts Board.
I haven't heard of any announcements on a service-
March.
In March? Okay.
That's a date. That's, I ran into, his brother is in town, at the farmer's market on Saturday, and they're kind of just getting his affairs together, and they're planning something into February, beginning of March, I said, so.
Oh, I have one more thing.
Yes?
For Ms. Collins, I have an evaluation I'll send you this week.
Everybody got him in on time?
All but one. I won't mention his name.
You mean the guy who was on furlough for 35 days?
No, I had, I had mine in early.
Oh.
Nah, 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 it was first, bro. Sorry.
It doesn't matter. Doesn't matter, as long as it's there, Bob. All righty. I'm up. Everything's been mentioned, other than Dog Park ribbon-cutting, right? That, folks are very excited about that, and that's on Saturday, the 9th, at 9:00 a.m., correct? And we, everybody should enter off of Lockwood, I saw.
Yes, sir.
All right. Yep, and there's, what do you have, like a gravel or a pervy parking lot back there? Or when you come in off of Lockwood? Cool. Well, Drew, that's been a long-anticipated project. You're gonna make a lot of puppies around town very happy, so can't wait to see it. Great job by the staff and everyone getting that together, because I know you did it all with your man-hours. So, awesome job. Uh, last but not least, Deputy Mayor, you're up.
Um, I had a couple of questions. There was, there was some emails that went around a little while back about the parking lot over at Oviedo on the Park, and the, trying to put some signs or do something about overnight parking, and, and we had a travel trailer. Someone parked a travel trailer right there as well. Is there anything being done with that?
Yes, we are. We're actually, police and recreation are working together, and we're gonna be getting those types of signs up, so that we can, that won't allow the trailers to be in there.
Okay. The, this was brought up at a work session, I believe, a while back, Drew. The caterers for the cultural center, is that open now for, for people, as long as they agree to our, our terms and conditions?
Yes, it is. However, one of the things, staff sent out notices to quite a few restaurants. One thing we're still working on, I know Sean is supposed to be getting with Lonnie, because we need to redo the catering contract. Because how the catering contract read initially was because we went out to bid, so we gotta take some of the verbiage out of it. So, Sean's supposed to be contacting Lonnie on that. It's something that's kind of been put aside, but we are taking other groups, and we've notified some of the local groups.
Okay. And then one last question. When, when the discussion in the, the fees for the cultural center and for Oviedo on the Park, there was, there was some discussion about the parking lot. And is the parking lot included in the, the fees? Like, so if an organization went to rent the, the park, do they get the parking lot as well and can do with it what they want?
Yes.
They do? Okay.
Yeah. One of the things that was discussed at one time was, you know, if we were gonna charge additional fees, that has been looked at. We have not put that into place. It could be something down the road, but basically, right now, if we have a wedding or a rental and that type of thing, it's considered that they get to utilize the parking lot.
But if it was another organization that was holding an event, and they wanted to charge for parking, could they, could they do that?
Uh, we, that's one of the things council has allowed us to have right now presently, of course, Great Day does, and Taste of Oviedo, I mean, excuse me, the barbecue cook-off, they've chose not to charge. Really, it's kind of, kind of open for discussion still.
Okay.
I have no problems with charging, but I guess a lot of it might be dependent upon how this council might look at that.
Okay. All right. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you. And just, that youth council is just, that was amazing, the presentation they gave this evening.
Those kids are something, aren't they?
Yeah. And lastly, welcome Chief Buchanan. We look forward to working with you, and, and just, you know, I think you, you're gonna do a great job at it. If you need any assistance, just let us know. That's all I have.
There's really not much of a difference. They've been here the same amount of time. Jeff is just quieter. And remember what flag flies on? The fire truck. There you go. All righty. Anything else with the good of the order? Hearing none. Future meeting dates. We have Monday, February 18th, 6:30 p.m., regular session. Monday, March 4th, 6:30 p.m., regular session. Monday, March 18th, there is no meeting. That is spring break week. Traditionally, we do not have any meeting that week. And then on April 1st, as we heard earlier, there's a CRA governing board meeting at 5:30 and a regular session at 6:30. So, hearing nothing else, we did go a little long tonight, but that's okay. Return.